For the call, private meeting come to order, Henry County Board of Commissioners, six thirty P M. Wednesday, July the twentieth, twenty sixteen. Somebody move, we accept, the agenda is published.
Move to approve.
They have motion District Three, second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, same sign. Purpose of this meeting here is public hearing for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen millage rate. And the purpose of the meeting, we advertise that this board is contemplating increasing property tax. And if the board is contemplating increasing property tax, it requires that you have three public hearings. So we had one this morning at nine thirty, this will be the second one of the day. And unless we can do something different, which I'm understanding we can't, we will have a meeting at nine thirty on the twenty seventh, in which the board will adopt the millage rate. Having said that, I'm going to yield the floor to the county manager, Mr. Lyndon Bana, and you have three minutes. No, I was kidding with you, no, you have more than that.
Commissioners, as we discussed this morning, some of the composition is, numbers needed a little more explanation. And I'm going to give you two scenarios, one, that the proposal that I put before the board, where we use a millage rate of thirteen, five, one, two. But the questions that need to be addressed on this line here is, how did we arrive at that twenty-one million, nine eleven in excess? And those three lines line up, there was in salary savings, where we would judiciously looked at not hiring people. Y'all know that I left a lot of spots blank for the year. Those operational savings are things that we just did not do from a standpoint of saying, alright, can we hold off on this to try to bank some of the money up? And then the last column is the unassigned fund balance that's above twenty-five percent. Add all those up, that's the twenty-one million dollars on the two-hundred-and-nineteen million dollar budget, the total budget. When you go down to the next part of how we discussed those things, that we'd be utilization of the money, you looked at the capital line items that we would transfer out of fund balance to do the departmental capital work. That was the stuff we went through in the line item review for several months. But that was the line item review that was twenty-one million dollars initially. We took it down to eight administratively, and the Board of County Commissioners took it down to five point five. So that's the first one out of the box. The initial construction or reconstruction of the thirty thousand square feet at the Phillips Drive building, that was eight million dollars, and that was the outside number that I told the board I would look up. And that would be for thirty thousand square foot, here, there, or yonder. And the repair replacement with the additional facilities that I'd wanted on it, the standby generation and the fiber hub there, that gets us closer to about seven million for the rehab, and it's about a little over nine, or eight and a half million for the new construction elsewhere. And then the five million dollars that we put, a million dollars in each district, so that, to augment your splotch dollars or new paving projects on it. So that brings all that around to about eighteen-five. The available fund balance at that eighteen-five level, at the three, a one-three-five, one-two millage rate, gives us a fund balance at that, at about three point four million dollars. Now, what's important to recognize is the work that's been done in the last two years, where these capital projects are coming online, based off of that number, and based off of the schedule that's above you, that's what we will be adding for the two thousand eighteen budget year. Remember, I've given you a five-year budget plan. This is two million dollars above for two thousand eighteen, and that carries through nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two for your five-year plan. Now, the current other proposal we looked at is if you went to a hundred percent rollback rate. Looking at this, we set it up in the same format, and you see where the savings actually accrued to get back to the twenty-one. And the first line you see at a hundred percent rollback is that we lose the four point seven, six, six, four, four, four million dollars. That would represent the savings going back to the taxpayers at a hundred percent rollback. That brings the available fund balance after that around seventeen million, and then we do the similar deductions as we were doing, talking about the projects, the capitals that were approved, or capital projects that were presented by staff from April through May. And then splitting the Phillips Drive reconstruction into two parts, we've got a phase one, whether we build it at Phillips Drive or someplace else, that eight million dollars now becomes a four million dollar issue. And then still the one million dollar per district, five million dollar paving projects. Now, what changes the ballgame here is our fund balance at year-end goes to two point six million. But the bigger change shows up over here when this four million dollar shows up on the impact of the two thousand eighteen budget. Instead of the, you're just recognizing the four point seven million dollars that goes away from the proposed rate to the hundred percent rollback. So I wanted to make sure the composition was understood, and you had the choices on it, so you'd understand where the money came from, how we got here. We were just very physically frugal, and that's how that money populated in those polls. I have, you have any questions, I'm here. Other than that, go to the public.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I have none. Anybody have any? What I'm going to do, this requires a public hearing, I want to open the floor up for three minutes, anybody that'd like to speak for or against this budget. And if you would, just come to the podium and state your name, and you will have three minutes. So, don't be afraid.
My name is Roland Wallace Junior. I reside at five-three-seven McCain Creek Trail, Stockbridge, Georgia, three oh two eight one. I'm a sixty-eight-year-old retired educator. Served three years in the United States Marine Corps. Simplified. I've resided in Stockbridge for the last nine years. I live my retirement reducing, and attempting to reduce my expenses daily, weekly, monthly, and annually. This increase will cost me to find seventy-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. My question is, is there anything else we can do besides increasing the millage rate? Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I'm one of those people from the Oversight Committee. My name is Carl Swinson, I live at forty-three Thurman Road, Stockbridge.
Is it owned?
Do I have to go to the other one?
I don't think that is owned.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah. My name is Carl Swinson, I live at forty-three Thurman Road in Stockbridge, Georgia, the unincorporated part. I have before me here, something that came from your comprehensive annual financial report. And you want to raise the rates, and yet, from the two thousand fifteen numbers that we see here, you took in, or you've got revenue coming in last year of a hundred and eighty-six million? You ever take? And you have a hundred and eighty-eight, and the expenditures of a hundred and sixty-six, there was an eighteen million dollar difference in the positive. And yet, you want to raise the taxes? The bigger picture here is the net assets we see here. Gentlemen, these assets are in the form of, a lot of it is in the form of property that the county, the people, own, that we have no business owning. Those properties, and there's hundreds, at least a hundred and fifty that I know of, and probably a lot more, that property being owned by the county is taken off of the tax rolls, thereby keeping the amount of tax revenue from property taxes artificially deflated. Now, I don't know how you justify this, but numbers, they really don't lie. You've got resources that are available to you. We all know that the worst-run businesses is the ones run by government, and we have all, we have all kinds of businesses out there that the government's trying to run. Not the least of which is this golf course, but there's others. You're looking to increase, always increase our taxes, never to reduce them. How much is enough for the county? Please tell me, because we have a whole lot of resources to draw on, without having to draw on the backs of the retired and those on fixed incomes. Which, by the way, I'm one too. So, people look at this, you guys, take a look at your own caffè. We have a problem here. These numbers don't jive. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Thomas Johnson, I live at fifty Barcliff Place, Stockbridge, Georgia. Retired Marine, and my wife is also retired. I'll make this short, what I don't understand, well, I kind of do, but, from two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen, my tax, property taxes increased sixty-five percent. Now, my projected increase from two thousand fifteen to sixteen is twenty-seven percent, and I don't get that. And I did the math here, you let me know if I'm wrong, we're looking at about a ninety-two percent increase since two thousand fourteen. And I just kind of want some justification for that. Now, I understand that you have to increase taxes to pay for certain things, and part of that comes from the splotch. What I don't get is, why the sudden increase? Couldn't have been done incrementally, like thirty percent, twenty-five percent at a time? When you're talking about sixty-five percent, for some of us, that's a lot. So that's something because that rolls into our mortgage. And so, if you gentlemen could give me an answer on that, I would really appreciate it, and the folks in the audience, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Artavia Spriggs, and I am a resident at the villages of Hampton, in Hampton, Georgia. And I'm here, I've never been at this type of meeting before, and just to hear the millage rates and all that good stuff, I don't understand all of the lingo. Well, I just wanted to kind of, you know, understand, like everybody else has come up, of, you know, why the property taxes are being raised, and we're having such issues like we're having even in my community. And I'm just going to give, just kind of show some of the pictures that we had a conversation with, I don't know how to.
Right there at the center?
At the center? Slide, put it up?
No.
Here, okay.
Right there.
Okay. See, we asked a couple of months ago, in regards to repaving our community in the front. It became a safety concern, because there were a lot of ditches and everything around. We got a response, and this was what, this was pretty much the response that we got. As you can see, to me, this is not quality work. I have several pictures of, that's just the entrance of what we're dealing with. I was fairly disappointed when I came back in town and I saw this. I saw the guys out, and I saw them working, I was like, great, we're going to make sure, they're going to make sure that we're all set and we're all done. And these are the type of pictures and the type of quality of work we're paying tax money for, and I'm very disappointed with it. As you can see, some of the payment went over into the grass. It hasn't been repaved, and I do know when you do pave, you know, if you go over, a car goes over, it's going to leave those streaks. But I just felt like, it was thoroughly ridiculous that it was left in this conditions, and we're a taxpaying community. And we never asked for anything else, we've been there about twelve years. And so it's been over those twelve years that we've had the work to be done, and this is what the results are. So I just wanted you guys to consider what is being provided by the county in the communities that we live in, and what our investments are. And I really want you guys to pay attention to what our cries are. I don't, if I was selling my home today, if I was a person that was coming in, I would not want to even come into the community with that type of pavement in the road, okay? Thank you, and I thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else like to be heard on the tap? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to ask you some questions, because what I want to say is.
Is it relevant to the?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you need to come to the podium, state your name, and the clock will start.
Mercedes Barker, two-seven-five Hillview Road in Hampton. You were showing on the fund balance monies, that twenty-one million dollars, and then you showed some other numbers, eight million, a six million, something that added up to that twenty-one million. Are those budgetary items that were part of the budget, or is this like above and beyond monies? Yes, yeah. You can show those off so that other people. These monies here, those items there.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they part of the budget, or were they above and beyond?
They were part of the budget that were caught up in savings, we did not spend the money. So, when you had the salary savings, we had many positions that were left open this year, vacant, some of it intentional, some of them we just got it. So, in the two thousand sixteen salary bin for that first line, is six million, three forty-seven. Those are vacant positions that were not, the money was not spent on that.
Okay, but, but two months ago, when they did the budget, was that money part of the budget? Or is that above and beyond monies?
I'm not understanding the question.
Okay. They voted for, they voted for a certain budget?
Yes.
Right? Two months ago in May, right? Are those monies there, that were there, that you're showing there, are those monies that were part of that budget?
No, it's the previous year. So we're, we don't run on the calendar year, so this is savings from what would have been the fifteen, sixteen budget, now we're in the sixteen, seventeen budget, so it's a crossover.
So it's money, it's sort of like, it's sort of like money, that money was sort of like leftover money from?
Yes.
Then, and so you said, well, we're going to, we have, we're going to sort of move it forward?
No.
It's still the finish off?
It would go to a fund balance. That's the where, all unspent money, unallocated money at year-end, populates an account called fund balance. So this was the contribution within fund balance that was a result of savings and benefits that were not paid out because of vacant positions.
And now we want to use some of that money for projects that are part of the budget, or not part of the budget?
They'll be part of the budget, yes.
They are, it is money that was allocated within the budget already?
No. We've got projects that we don't have funding for. So if we were to do the capital projects on it, this would be how first the money was populated, how we arrived at the twenty-one million dollars. And these are the projects that we've proposed to move them to do.
To move to.
You have to move, once it gets into fund balance, the transaction, I got to move that.
I've got twenty-five seconds.
That's my fault, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You've got twenty-three seconds, because the purpose of this is a public.
The purpose of this is to say, I think that if we didn't, if it was not money of the county, that the county didn't have in the budget, then we don't have the money. It's just like at home, if you don't have the money already there, then you can't spend it. And we shouldn't be asking people to come, and now, oh, we want a little bit more money from you because of that.
Okay, time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Millage works, and that we've been, actually been rolling the millage backwards over the last two to three years. And that was the plan this year as well, so it's not a millage increase.
Taxes, property taxes, millage rates are quite confusing, and it certainly not, we certainly don't want it to be confusing to the citizens. The Henry County Tax Digest reached about six point seven billion dollars in two thousand six. I'm going by memory here, so if my number's a little bit off, forgive me, but it's around six point seven billion around two thousand six or seven. That's taxable digest. What a taxable digest is, forty percent of total value in the county. So to say for easy figures, let's say a home is worth a hundred thousand, we tax it forty percent, we tax them forty thousand dollars. So that six point seven billion was forty percent of a hundred percent of the value in Henry County. Every year, in two thousand nine, ten, eleven, twelve, we saw a sharp decline in the values in Henry County. The millage rate did not stay proportionate through those years to generate the same amount of revenue for the county. Instead, starting in two thousand nine, which some of the commissioners are no longer here serving, some, we got some new commissioners, but every commissioner that came on board worked to decrease the millage rate, year in, year out. And the county cut positions and cut projects to generate a smaller tax bill for the citizen. The values were going down, the millage rate was also declining. We've got some people in the county, to today in two thousand sixteen, is paying less, I would say the majority of the citizens in Henry County are paying less in tax today than they did just six, or seven, or eight, or even ten years ago.
Can I interject there, though? I'm sorry, the values of property, though, are still below the rate back in two thousand seven.
Slightly below, very close, but slightly.
They're five to ten percent.
Depending on which, which, which property.
And at that time, back in two thousand nine or so, wasn't there an increase in millage?
No, sir.
Percent?
No, sir. And again, all right, let me try to explain it like this. If you have a home worth a hundred thousand, and let's say the millage rate is ten, if your value of your home goes to a hundred and ten thousand, state law says you've got to roll that millage rate of ten down, so the citizen doesn't get an increase in their tax bill. So you'd have to adjust that millage rate down to, let's say, nine, to generate the same amount of tax bill. If you keep it at ten mills, and your value went from a hundred thousand to a hundred and ten thousand, it generates a tax increase.
So what happens in the opposite, when the value of the property goes down? Didn't they have to revamp the millage rate up to accommodate the?
No, sir. No, sir, not, not one time in the, in the last eight years has the commissioners, Board of Commissioners, increased the millage rate. They've always adjusted it downward, sometimes, and often not a full rollback, in case my example, not down to nine, but somewhere between nine and ten. Okay, so your values went down, the millage rate also, they could have, they could have raised it to get the same amount of money, they didn't do that. They adjusted, I believe it was, Mr. Chairman, what year was it that fifty-seven employees?
Twelve.
Two thousand twelve, fifty-seven employees were let go. And there's other, there's other ways that they've cut. I'm not proud to say that we've got property in Henry County, we've got weeds growing out of the gutters. We all be ashamed of that, and I'm sure these guys are not proud of it either. But the bottom line is, and I don't want to be the voice for these commissioners, if I say anything you don't agree with, certainly speak up, but they have worked extremely hard to make sure they can reduce the property taxes, yet provide a certain amount of service. We all want services in the community. If you have kids, you want your ball fields correct, so the kids go play ball. If you've got seniors, you probably want a good senior center, libraries, things like that. Through the years, taxes have been, people have paid less in taxes, yet expected the same amount of services. Again, we've got a lot of people in the community that are paying less today than they did ten years ago in property taxes, yet every single thing has went up, from bread, to milk, to gas, to asphalt, to everything else. The costs of providing those services has increased, yet the amount of money, year in, year out, that citizens pay, as, in total, has decreased. But to answer the commissioner's question about millage rate, this year, one mill generates about six million dollars in revenue. In two thousand, again, I'm going by memory, I believe it was two thousand nine, one mill generated four point seven million dollars in revenue. So the twelve mills on a digest in two thousand twelve didn't generate the same amount of money twelve mills would have generated in two thousand seven or two thousand sixteen. So, I was asked today how the commissioners come up with their millage rate. They hear from citizens, what's important to them. Again, ball fields, libraries, we heard this morning, people are concerned about libraries, senior centers. They want people to staff them, they want, they want to know those resources are there for them. It takes revenue to do that. And again, I'm not trying to be the cheerleader for the Board of Commissioners, I wouldn't want any of their positions. They're faced with a difficult task every single year, and it is, how to provide the services for the citizens? How do we keep a world-class community, yet reduce the taxes? And even this year, they're not looking to increase the millage rate. They had to advertise, because at the time of the budget, they were not sure exactly how much revenue they needed to provide the digest. They didn't know exactly how much money was needed to provide the services. So the hearings are here to hear from the citizens. They're not looking to raise the millage rate. At the absolute worst, it'd be the millage rate they had last year. But they're looking at how far down, how, how much can we lower the millage rate and still meet the services and demand of the county? So again, this morning, somebody stood up here and said, we don't understand why the values are increasing, and you're also looking to increase the millage rate. They're not looking to increase the millage rate over what it was last year. They're having discussions about how, how much lower can they go and still provide the services they need? Commissioner Holmes, are you satisfied with that?
Thank you so much.
I kind of rambled a little bit, apologize for that, but.
Perfect.
Yes, sir.
Two thousand and twelve, correct me if I'm wrong, David, the millage rate was eleven point seven five.
My memory's not that good. It may be, but I've got it downstairs, but again.
Pass forward, increase the millage, two point seven five, which give us a rate of fourteen point five oh. Okay. Since then, we've reduced it down, the millage has gone down to thirteen point eight seven. And we're looking probably for another reduction this time.
Correct. Again, when you're, when you lose two billion dollars, two billion dollars in taxable value, and you have to provide certain services, you want to, these guys wear these badges? And I don't mean to go to the teachers, or the police officers, or the firemen, but we ought to be able to take care of them. And when you lose two billion dollars in taxable value, you've got to do something to make up that deficit.
I agree with that, what I'm trying to, and I just found out about this, maybe just minutes before, but what I'm trying to make sure I've got my head around is that the property values are slightly below where they were at the beginning.
That is correct.
Five to ten percent, yet I believe we're paying more in taxes now, property taxes, than we were at that time. If not more, then it's very close because of millage.
I'd be happy to meet with you, my office downstairs, be happy to meet with you after this meeting.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm going to. Yeah, I'm just, you know, I want to make sure I understand too, what additional taxes that we're not getting today that we would be getting.
The Board of Education actually has a millage rate.
And they get 2/3 of the tax bill. We only get a small portion. Like last year, we rolled it down some, but you would have to look at the school board, they set their own millage rate. So last year, had we done 100% rollback, your taxes still would have gone up because of the school board. And that's, that's out of our control, we don't, we don't vote on that, we don't have any input. So that's, that's why.
Just the county side of the taxes.
And again, we only get 1/3 of what you see on that tax bill. The majority of it goes to the school.
And that's something citizens need to be aware of, I had a discussion last night at the Board of Education about the two-mill water bond. Most counties don't, don't have a water bond. Most counties' school millage rate is not 20 mills. Most counties don't have a 3.68 bond rate for the school. In totality, Henry County's millage rate may be fairly high. For the county portion of that millage rate, total millage rate, it's not. We're extremely competitive with all other counties.
Well, I understand that the, you're saying there's $2 billion deficit prior years, but fortunately, it seems like the, the housing market has picked up, there's a lot of new construction going on, the commercial market's picked up, I know they pay impact fees, sales tax, so I don't know if that's considered in the budget, because, you know, when a builder pays taxes on a $20,000 lot versus a $250,000 home, that's a big difference, you multiply that out throughout the county, or if there's other ways for the revenue with the, with maybe the sales tax, because we get a lot of three traffic, 7.5, so maybe other people can help burden the cost.
That's correct. But then, and, and you're absolutely correct, the, these commissioners, when they set a budget, they're not putting the burden of all the budget on the backs of the homeowners. I want to say about 55% of the total budget comes from property owners. Again, I'm not sure, maybe the finance department can tell us, but about 55% of the budget comes from homeowners, the other 45% comes from impact fees, sales tax revenue, and assortment of other areas. So the homeowners are, are, are burdened with about 55% of it. And let me go ahead and say this, we've got an economic development team in place, they're doing everything they can to draw the right type of industry into Henry County. We've got a Home Depot e-commerce center built on 155, they're looking to expand, we need more type of businesses like that. The Home Depot on 155 pays the right $300,000 in property taxes. If you offset that with rooftops, how many rooftops would it take to generate that same $300,000? It's about 170. What kind of impact does Home Depot have on services? They're not going to call the police department, they're not going to call the fire department, they're not going to put kids in the school, they are going to offer jobs. The 170 homes, they're going to have kids in schools, 170 different households, the 2.3 cars per household, it's going to put more traffic on 155. That's the type of industry we need, and I think the county is working very diligently to lure that type of industry into Henry County. And the end result to that is going to be a relief to the homeowners in Henry County. If we can draw more e-commerce type of industry in here, good industry, the winner in that whole deal is the citizens of Henry County.
Let's get back to the public hearing portion. Anybody else like to be heard at this time? If not, I will ask the, any of the board members, I'd like to make any comments or questions? Yes, sir, I yield the floor.
What I want to make that I don't think a lot of people realize, when a home is built in Henry County, a residence, a house, it actually causes your taxes to go up, not go down. Everyone sees these subdivisions going up, and look how much money is generated from these homes. They require more services than they pay for. So I don't know, when we get a business in here, it pays for much more services than it uses. But a home, every home that you see, every rooftop, new rooftop you see is causing your taxes to go up. And I, a lot of people don't realize this, but important point. So we're not, we are increasing our tax base, but we're also increasing the amount of officers we need, amount of firefighters we need. E-911's got to go up. It, this. On the building permits?
Well, if you would come to the podium and state your name, if you can have a dialogue, because I can't, I can't hear you enough.
Okay. I'm, I'm in that industry, so I can answer that question if you, because I can't hear you either. Sorry about that. All right.
My name's Matt Huber, I live down in the Joyner Estates, aisle 81.
Let's talk about building permits for a minute. When we put a fee on a home, a builder for a residential house, the majority of that money that we build, that builder, has to go back into the building department. We cannot state law, we cannot supplement our budget by sticking it to the developers and builders. And if you'd come to the meetings sometime, there's actually a gentleman that comes up here and threatens to sue us, what, about once a month, because we tried to raise the fees to the builders, to kind of help offset the citizens. And again, back to the homes, we do charge the fees for the builders, but it's really the builders who are the ones tearing up our roads, because who tears up the roads? The big trucks, trucks carrying the lowboys with the bulldozers. These type of big, large equipments, the one with the, the, all the, you know, the wood, different structure stuff, that's what tears up our roads. So we do fee, you know, put fees on them, but we, we can't subsidize the budget with their fees. It's just state law can't do it. We, we have in the past a little bit, but we can't do it.
Was there a way to control the number of permits you grant per area for the services so that they're not overstressed?
We, we've looked at doing some of that stuff, and at one time, there wasn't a moratorium, but right now, there's such a large number of lots that are out there, we really have no way of stopping that. We've tried to produce good growth, but, you know, we're reaping the benefit of this board, prior to all of us, zoning subdivisions everywhere. I mean, if you've been around, there's subdivisions just going up everywhere, back '07, '05. We're now reaping the benefits. We understand the problems and the issues, but we're having to pay for the past, and there's, we're just having to stuck with it. So that's, that's where we're at, and that's why, you know, we've looked at other areas. I tried to increase the fees. We've tried to lease out some county buildings, county property, it didn't go. We've tried other things, and it, you know, you try, and then you go back to the drawing board, so we're always looking for different areas, but.
Would, would that same theory then extrapolate even more for apartment buildings? Because you have even more.
Apartments kill us.
Okay.
Apartments kill us. They overload our schools.
Do they have ability to control zoning?
Yes, we do control zoning, and I don't know if, I haven't been on this board since we've approved apartment complex.
Okay.
At all. So, you know, we, we are aware of this, and we, we've done everything to block, as a matter of fact, we turned down apartments a month ago, a month ago? We turned down apartments about a month ago. So we, we're aware, but again, making up for lost time, to answer your question.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Maloff, you have anything to say, comment?
No, I'm good, thank you.
District five? District three?
Well, I just want the citizens to know that we took on a lot this year with the splash. We added two new fire stations, and we have, we can't build a fire station and not put personnel in them. We also did a reset program for our public safety department, that, that cost us around $2.1 million to get our offices up to where they need to be. And we also added a senior center over in Hampton that's been long overdue, and, you know, those are some splash projects, but it's a hard decision, it really is.
Let me share my comments with you. It'll be a repeater this morning. I have not voted for a tax increase in my political career, which is 30 years. Just tell you, this is not, can't be political, because I'm not, I won't be here next year, I'm not seeking office. But my thoughts are, the, I don't have a problem voting for property tax if it's in the right place. In this case here, the reason we're having this meeting, the law says, even though you roll back the millage rate, unless you roll it back 100%, it is considered a tax increase. Okay? Having said that, last year, the millage rate was 13.78, and that 13.7873 generated somewhere around $76 million. Okay, our budget last year was 134 million, so that was roughly about half. Now, because the assessments went from $5.6 billion, and that's the value of everything in Henry County, and that's 40%, and then it went to $6 billion this year. So that means if the millage rate was left at 13.873, that same amount of money would generate 81,863,000 dollars. Now, in order to roll the taxes back 100% to generate roughly about $76 million, the tax rate, the millage would be 12.696. Okay? What the, the board is contemplating is to drop it from 13.873 down to 13.583. Okay? Now, even though they, they dropped the millage, your, your property tax could go up, they call it an increase. Some may go down, but some may go up. Even at 100%, some of the houses may go up, most of them will come down, or stay the same, that's the intent. But the, the issues that I have, and I've had this for three and a half years now, but we have people in your house, you call it savings. Up here, in the professional world, we, we changed the name of it, it's called fund balance. Fund balance is savings. Okay? This board, and I've requested them to not set it at 25%, but I know the first three years, it was off and on, and we couldn't get together, so I asked the board to set it, and they set the fund balance at 25%. So what that means, the, the budget, the fund balance allegedly cannot ever decrease beyond 25%. Okay, this year's budget is 142 million. So you do the math, 142 million at 25% means that we've got 34 million, 34.2 million in fund balance. Now, based on the information that I rely upon, which is the groups, the Professional Financial Officers Association, which we rely upon them, they indicate that a larger county should keep at least two months of fund balance. Okay? But never go below 5%. Okay, what that means to us, if we, right now, we saving, we keeping 35.5 million, if we reduce that to 15%, that means that we would have a little over $21 million in the bank, and right now, it, it takes about $11 million a month to run Henry County, so that would be two months. Okay, if we could reduce that down to 15%, that means we would pick up another $14.5 million. And my thought, as long as we got this money sitting there, I'm not going to raise your property tax. It's money that is just sitting there. And is it extra money? I'll say it's extra money, but anyway, because of that, I haven't voted for a property tax increase, and I won't vote for one this year, simply because if I was, we're going to have this hearing and adopt it next Thursday, the 27th. I will not be here, I will be out of town, it's already scheduled, before all this was scheduled, and I will not be out of town, but if I was in town, I would vote no for property tax like I have in the last three years. But having said that, I yield the floor to anybody, a commissioner like to be heard. Okay? Not hearing any comments, does somebody move a adjourn?
Will move.
Second.
Second, have a motion? Three, second district five, any further discussion? Only favor is raise your hand. I thought you had a question. Okay, thank you for coming out.